I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting of Monday, April 4th, 2022. Present this evening are all five members of the planning board in the flesh. We'd like to welcome back Cutter, first time in about six months. So, no roll call votes tonight, that's obviously welcome. We're also joined by Jeremy Downs, Assistant Town Planner, I'm sorry, Assistant Town Engineer, and Joseph Janowitz, Town Planner. As we do every, every time we meet, we'd like to start with open forum. Does the board have anything for open forum this evening?
No.
Nope.
Joe, anything for open forum, or Jeremy?
Just if anybody is here for Five Make Peace that you've requested continue to the next meeting, which is April 19th, Tuesday, that week, just happens to be a different day because Patriots' Day.
Will it be in this room?
Yes. Anybody from the public here for open forum this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our public hearing items. The first of which is the one that Joe just mentioned, PB 2201, for Five Make Peace Road. The applicant has requested a continuance without discussion to the April 19th, 2022 meeting. Is there a motion to continue PB 2201 to the April 19th, 2022 meeting?
So moved.
Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Great. All right, we're on to general.
Actually Dylan, sorry, I was just looking at my calendar. I'm not going to be here on the 19th, so I don't know if you want to let the applicant know that, just FYI.
Kind of unlikely that it'll be that date as well, so no worries.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Darren. All right, that brings us to our general business topics. The first item A under general business tonight is PB 2204, preliminary subdivision plan at Eight Flag Road. Good evening.
Good evening.
You can sit if you prefer, or stand up, sit.
Yeah, I'm a sitting guy, so. Well, Jonathan's right behind me. So Jonathan and Laurie Wilder are behind me, I am, they're the applicants, I'm Jeffrey Brem, Myers-Brem Corporation, the engineers, good evening. I think it's been at least two years since I've been in this room with other people like this, so, with the planning board, so, it's at least welcome back for me. We've made some changes, the last meeting we had was by Zoom, and we received, we presented our plan, and we received comments from the board, as well as some public members, members of the public, and I'd like to go over those with you.
Sure.
The changes that were made, and probably why, as well. So now, I'm going to stand up.
Okay.
So to refresh your memory, there are two plans before you, an A and a B. The A is our preferred plan, is what we'd like to do.
Yep.
And we're talking with the planning staff. One of the requirements of a road in town is it's at least 400 feet long.
Yep.
We're asking for a waiver for that, but they wanted us to show what a roadway would look like if it was 400 feet long, so that's this exhibit, Plan B. So I'm not really going to spend too much time on Plan B, and we really didn't, we didn't change Plan B, it's more of an exhibit plan for you. But we did make some changes to Plan A, and the first change is that there was a lot of concern about the drive, so what we're trying to do, let me back up, is 6.8 acres of land, it's got some challenges, it's probably most land does now, it's on Flag Road, number Eight Flag Road. Number Six Flag Road was already a hammerhead lot cut out decades ago. The idea would have been pretty easy if this had another 50 feet of frontage, it certainly has enough area for two hammerhead lots, well, one hammerhead lot and a conventional lot, but because there's already a hammerhead lot there, and we only have 200 feet of frontage, we can't do a third hammerhead lot without a variance. So we came with this approach instead, which is to build some kind of a roadway to add frontage, and ask for waivers, so that we don't have to build that roadway, so it doesn't become a public roadway, but it does provide the requisite frontage.
Yep.
So that's what this plan does, the frontage is there. Lot one is the hammerhead lot, basically 50 feet minimum frontage on this new bulb, and 2.75 acres, the R factor .55, frontage is actually 260 feet, but if it's at the street, but if it's measured here, it's less than 200, but it's more than 50. So there's your hammerhead lot, and the 50-foot setback is shown for that. Lot two is a conventional lot, 200, has 200 feet at the setback, 390 at the street, and as you know, we have to draw that setback line, and then the acreage is 3.45 acres, it's a conventional lot, the R factor is .40. So basically, you can see, we designed that to meet the R factor, and whatever's left, we put over here. So, the idea again is to provide frontage and not make a lot of change, we're only trying to put one additional lot on it.
Yep.
We didn't want to really rip apart, the challenges on this site is essentially the slope, and if you've been there, it rises fairly quickly, levels off a little bit to where Jonathan Laurie's house is, and they have a roadway, gravel roadway driveway, which kind of follows that, you know, S curve up that road. We want to come off that S curve here, on the western portion, and then just go in a southerly direction against the property line. Now, the change, we had the driveway along the existing cart path, which is along the base of the hill, in parts, it goes in and out of trees and stuff, and we left it right on the property line, and the concern was, can it be moved over? And so we looked at that, and yes, we can move it over, cause a little bit more earthwork, tree clearing, and so forth, some, you know, the existing cart path kind of went around some trees, now we're going to have to go through some of those trees, but certainly, it's only 12 feet wide, so it's not very wide, and we're going to provide 15 feet, and the setback for this lot is 15 feet, so we're basically going to be past the setback. Put some no-clearing zone in there, and put a privacy fence along the whole length. Sierra did have a comment that she thought some of the privacy fence needed to be adjusted a little bit, when we get to the final design, we'd look at adjusting that, so no issues there. That's the first, biggest change, right there, first and second. The second one was, if you remember, the house was oriented kind of oddly to Alcorn, it's kind of oriented for the driveway instead of this, so we just rotated the house around, still works with the driveway, and then now it orients closer to the houses along Alcorn, so when you see it through the woods, because there is woods here, but at least when you see the house, it won't be the side of the house. We added a fire turnaround here, which still has to be looked at by the fire department in final design, but at least it's there. And we showed the septic system, those question on this lot here, lot number 12, how far the septic was going to be, and so forth, so we showed that, 120 feet to the septic system from their building, we also added the building of number 10 on the plan, and showed that closest point building to building is 90 feet. So although, you know, the setback technically is 30-foot rear, we're keeping quite a bit away from that. We shrunk up a lot of the clearing limits, and the ideal here is to get a building lot, not necessarily to expose the hills and create a big farmland, that's not the concept at all, it's really for building lots. We reduced a lot of the clearing, and that's it, those are the planned changes. And we added a settling basin, sorry, up front here, there's a, we have some runoff coming down this hill, and currently, it's picking up some gravel on the driveway, and discharging onto the street on the big storms, so our idea is to pick it up, we're not, it's not a, you know, tremendously big change to what's there, but we're going to build a settling basin, basically a four bay, similar to what we've done in other projects, so that the water generally goes there first, and then we proposed paving that first section of roadway for 100 feet, and that paving there, where it touches Flag Road, and now we have a place for the drainage to go, should alleviate that problem in the future. So it's not a huge change to what's there, the whole, that's the concept, is not to make a huge change to what's there. So if you would indulge me, and you have a light agenda, so hopefully you will, I could go through some of the comments that we received from the town, as well as the neighbors.
By all means.
So, and my, now I'll sit down. So the fire department wanted to, they had issues as we move into the definitive stage, but their big comment was, at the end, they'll look at alternatives if we agree to put a fire suppression system, a sprinkler system in the building, I've talked to my client, he's fine with it in the new building, obviously he doesn't want to rip apart his existing house, but the new building, which is further back, he'd have no problem, so I suspect that if this were to go forward, we would meet with the fire and go over those details with them.
Before you go on, I have one question, Jeff, relative to those comments, and to Joe as well, just to confirm, which preliminary plan they reviewed, was it the March 23rd?
Yes.
Okay. That's my only comment, because it's not documented in their letter.
But as you know, we've worked with the fire on these kind of issues before, and have worked them out, and I didn't think the letter was that encumbrant, that we wouldn't be able to.
Yeah.
Same thing with engineering, there was a comment, can the engineering work, and we agree that we have a lot of design to do, but we believe it could work in that facility, so. A few, I wrote some notes here, so if you need me to get more detail, I can do that. Fuhr Sanger had an issue regarding the rotating of the house, and if you're here, and I mispronounce your name, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm doing the best I can. So he wanted to rotate the house, and also, which we've done, and do something about the erosion out front, which we're proposing. Gupta wanted to move the driveway away from the lot line, which we've done, and mentioned wetlands in the area, they don't want to create new ones, and how will the wetlands be affected? There is a wetland that shows up on another plan for this lot here at Four Alcorn Street that Matt Salem provided to us, in this general area here, and we're not proposing to do anything on this plan with that wetland here. So, although there's wetlands here, and then this whole thing here, off the property, is wetlands. Again, the idea is to minimize the effort on this project, and not do that. Then Gupta made also a comment that they preferred option A, which we all, at least we all prefer, and what about the flora and fauna? And the flora and fauna, I guess I'm not going to comment on, that's conservation when we go there.
Yep.
Jay Schurkovell@gmail.com, he didn't give a name, but that was one. They're on One Main Street, so, One Main Street is over here, plot of it, but it's over here, and the way this hill works is, you can see that, that's the top of the hill, and that's the top of the hill, this flows this way to that wetland, once you get onto Six, it flows that way onto Main Street. So their concern was, would this exacerbate some of their problems on Main Street, and because it's not Six Flag Road, which would have, it's Eight Flag Road, we are not going to be, have any impact. That'll come out when we do the drainage analysis with the final. Woo Sun and Lee, I think I got that right, I mentioned that it's steep, a long paragraph about its steepness, we concur, and that's the whole point of this plan, as opposed to a full development of the 6.8 acres into, you know, one acre lots.
Yep.
We're trying to, you know, what's the right thing to do for the land, for the people that live there that want to sell, and get some of their money, so that they could go on with their situation, but also not to destroy the environment, or at least affect the environment as least as possible. So, the limited density, least amount of grading, we're agreeing with that, they mentioned that it's steep, and we believe by our plan, we're doing that. Again, they also wanted to move the driveway away from the property line, which we've done, and, and this is number eight. These are the people that live here, closest to the building, I guess, or number eight and number 10 are the closest ones affected, and we've moved the building a little bit further away on this plan from number eight, but not close, so close to number 10 that it's really affected, like I said, it's 90 feet away. They questioned the waivers to limit the project to two lots, so those are my notes on that. Lastly, we submitted a formal waiver request, and the idea here is, ultimately, we know this is a non-binding situation with, as a preliminary plan, but we need to go forth and spend, you know, gads and gads of money, survey the property, do a topo, some topo, do a boundary, coming with final plans, you know what it's like, I'm telling the audience as well, and for that, there are certain waivers that are critical, and if ultimately they're not going to get approved, then that would be, you know, kind of an unfair burden to put on an applicant to do all this work, and then, at the end of the day, not get the waivers that they were expecting, so, although we know it's non-binding, we're kind of hopeful that you give us direction on these, so we know whether to go forward or not. So, the waiver requests, as you know, your regulation required two specific things with the waivers, outside of the identification of them, is to explain why and outline the cost, or the savings of any cost.
Yep.
So let's go through them real quickly. Pavement width, obviously, we just want to pave what's already there for the first 100 feet, and it's a very variable width, as you could see from the plan, so instead of the 22-foot wide, and then the bulb, which would pave the whole area, we don't want to pave the whole area, we just want to pave what's already gravelled, to control the erosion, and so we need a waiver for that. Estimated cost is $16,000. Next one is dead-end streets, and this one is really a two-part, one is the having a dead-end street less than 400 feet, and as I said, that's option B. It's a weird regulation, I got to tell you, I worked in 30 or so communities in Massachusetts, I've never seen one with a minimum roadway before, you're the only one that I've seen. As a matter of fact, if you go to other parts of the country, and if you fly in an airplane, you'll see elbows, which is sort of what this is, in a way, and that's essentially a minimal, a small roadway, where at the elbow, they bow, bow out the road, so that they could create frontage, and that's done all the time elsewhere, but it could not be done here in Westford, so. So that, as well as constructing the work in the cul-de-sac, so that's, estimated cost savings is $20,000, and I think Jeremy, if he wanted to debate me, would debate me a little bit on where that cost is, does it include the 400 feet reduction, or is it just the pavement? So that's a very estimated cost, but it's not small, and it's not huge, that's the point of that. Underground utilities, streetlights, this is an interesting one, as I was reading through it, I asked for this in my original plan, but I realized that streetlights are not required unless the planning board thinks that they're needed. I've done many projects in the town, and most of the time, the planning board doesn't want them, they'd rather have the lanterns out front, so is this a waiver or not, I don't know, I listed it, I said it's sort of not applicable.
Yep.
Curbing, no curbing proposed, we're not proposing to do any curbing, we're trying to use country drainage, not concentrate the flow, where it is concentrated right now, we're putting in a four bay, so. But otherwise, you'd have to put along the roadway, some kind of curbing, and we're trying not to concentrate, otherwise, if you concentrate, then you have to do something with it. Minimum driveway width, interesting, common driveways are 16 feet, this is more of a roadway up to here, yeah, it looks like a common driveway, but essentially, from here to here, it's technically a roadway, from here to here, it's a common driveway. In any case, what we're trying to do is limit it to what's there now, as far as width goes, so we certainly need a waiver of that. If you were to say, this is the common driveway, we need it from there to there, if you say the whole thing really is a common driveway, then we need it for the whole thing, but one way or another, we do think we need a waiver for that, and I've estimated that as 8,000, and I assumed it was the whole thing. It's required to pave the common driveway, so we're asking to only pave 100 feet of the 240 feet of it, so that's...
Justification.
For not paving it? The Wilders have lived there for 30-something years, it's been unpaved the whole time, they realize that there's erosion problems, and that's the paving part, that's what we're going to solve, the paving part, but the rest of the driveway doesn't really need to be paved. This section right here, the flat section anyway, you know, and then it starts getting steep up here, off of the roadway, so to speak. So right here is steep, and here it's steep. I don't think that's, that's not a killer, so if it needs to be paved for a whole 240 feet, that's not a project killer. Some of these others would be, but. And then lastly, no sidewalks proposed, obviously, we're not proposing a sidewalk on something like this, and the cost of that is $2,000. So, I think you have some abutters behind me.
Yep.
The board may have comments before, and I'm here, and the Wilders are here as well, they traveled down from Maine to be here, in case anybody had a comment from them, one answer from them.
Great.
I actually have, I have a question on what you just presented, Jeff. I'm struggling here, I mean, I'm fine with three, four, and seven on the waivers, but the other ones, I'm struggling with when I read the fire department memo from Lieutenant Parsons, and when he read the condition under which they would allow a fire protection, fire sprinkler system in lieu of, it says, when the roads cannot be installed due to location, due to topography, waterways, non-negotiable grades, or other similar conditions. It doesn't mention in here, cost savings, and so, I guess, I'm still uncomfortable making that determination, because I don't know if we are satisfying what the fire safety officer has asked of us.
Yep, yep. Well, you're right on, I mean, that was...
That's my concern.
Say that again, Mr. Shannon.
If you read the memorandum from Lieutenant Parsons, and you read the very last paragraph, where he talks about allowing for an approved fire sprinkler system, he addresses it when the roadway can't be built due to topography, waterways, non-negotiable grades, or other similar conditions, and that's not what I'm hearing here, as the justification for not building the roadway, and asking for these waivers.
Well, then maybe I skipped something, because what I didn't tell you is that the roadway I'm asking not to build is right here, and it goes up from here to here about 15 feet, five, 10, no, 20 feet, from this point here, to that point is 20 feet.
Well, I'm thinking he's also talking about the minimum width along the length of it.
The roadway, but the roadway back to the house in the back, is that going to be paved or unpaved?
To the new house.
That's, well, those are the things that we need to talk about with the fire chief, it's supposed to be unpaved, we're intended, I don't think it says either way, this says proposed driveway.
Okay.
But if he says that needs to be paved, and I want sprinkler systems, we would do that, that's what I'm saying. I think the roadway, the waivers I'm looking for is right here, not here, that's not, that's not a waiver request.
I mean, his, I mean, I was taking the third bullet point in the memorandum from the fire chief, as saying that, essentially, to deal with the imposed loads of fire apparatus, you'll provide an all-weather driving surface, and that dirt and gravel roads are not, right?
Right.
So, you know, that's, I think that is a challenge, I agree with Bob on that one, considering a waiver to not pave some of these roads, I think.
I guess, Jeff, I was looking at waiver number five, as addressing that new driveway. Am I missing something?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was saying. So the waivers are all related to here, they end right here, that's the end of the waivers, from here on, there's no waivers necessary, no waivers, no variances, nothing.
Because it's not a common driveway after that.
Because it's not a common driveway after this point.
And that one's, it's a driveway, well, there's a stretch of common driveway, then.
This here, that's common driveway standards, and I'm asking for a waiver on one of those, and then all the other ones having, are having to do with this bulb, building the bulb, and so forth. Now, what, I think what the fire chief, and we will, I mean, not the chief, Lieutenant Parsons, is talking about is, these are all required under NFPA 1, his first page list.
Yep.
The second page is, we're, we will look at changing, or we will look at not requiring some of those things in NFPA 1, if you were to sprinkler it. That's what I think he's saying, I don't know, Joe, if you know anything differently than I do.
That sounds, when I spoke to Lieutenant Parsons today, that sounded the direction he was going, you know, there would be a sprinkler system, and then we would look, he would look at with you, potential options for driveway width, driveway surface.
So I guess we could consider the waiver requests contingent upon final conversation.
Right, so as long as they're working out with the fire department, if they're happy, we're happy.
Well, we're not really, I mean, we can show support, we're not voting on these waiver requests, but...
No, he asked for direction on the waiver.
Yeah, and, and that would be part of the draft decision that we will review and...
I could give you some background, and try not to get myself in trouble here, the fire departments across Commonwealth have been trying to get sprinklers required on every house, for years, that's, that's a fact, that I'm not getting myself in trouble with. There are other factions out there that don't want that, affordable housing advocates and others, so there's this problem here. So what they've done is, they, because they do want fire suppression system, and they realize how effective they are, they're willing to waive some of their other requirements, and, and I think, to a certain degree, this is where I'm going to get myself in trouble, some of the requirements were intent, intensively, no, purposely made more stringent than maybe they would need to be, so that they can have the opportunity to make deals with people, so to speak. So I think that this is one of them, I mean, does it, does it really, every driveway in America have to be 20 feet wide, you know, for fire apparatus, so, those are the kind of things that I think they're thinking of. So, I suspect that we're going to have no problem coming to terms with these, one way or another, so. I know you now have to know, hear that from me, he's not here, and write something, or at least tell me something, but I think we'll be able to work this out, because I know where he's looking for, and if he says, I want that paved all the way, then we'll just pave it all the way, that's not, that's not a killer. If he said, we're not going to give you the waiver for 400 feet, we want you to build that, then that changes the whole project, right? So those are the, you know, there are big waivers, and there are waivers we could deal with, that one we could deal with.
Okay. All right, so, does the board want to deliberate, or do we want to go to staff, any comment?
No.
Joe, do you have anything to add?
Not at this time, no.
Jeremy, any thoughts from engineering?
We took a cursory look at it, but, you know, until we get to the definitive stage, we have no technical comments, other than to say that this will require stormwater management permit, because it is a subdivision, and we are aware of the, is it existing erosion problem along Flag Road, so we're really looking forward to that getting taken care of, because when we do have a heavy storm, there's a fair amount of gravel that washes out into, into Flag Road, down Flag Road, and I believe into the wetlands, so, that's going to be a high priority.
Yeah, we obviously know we're going to hear from abutters here, Bob, do you have additional comments, or have you?
Not at this time, I think we want to hear from the abutters.
Sure, Kate, anything from you?
Of course. I think, I think when we do draft our decision for the preliminary, that we should make note of the fire department's concerns, and that, that they have to be addressed, one way or the other, and... I did have a quest, or a question, the last time you were here, you were talking about having a waiver to allow above-ground utilities, but you didn't mention that tonight, so is that, you've decided you're going to bury them under the ground, like?
I think it's probably better.
Yep.
I deal a lot with national grid, and I think that they would have a real problem putting in poles up there with all the trees, so.
Yeah, because that, because I would recommend that too, because I, I think there are a lot of issues if it's above the ground, like you just noticed.
I will say, Kate, while you're on that subject, whether it's a well or water line hasn't yet been determined, and I think I'd like that to be determined ultimately by the end user, because it's a long way for a, for a water service.
And I don't think there's water at that end of Flag.
It's kind of a hydrant, pretty close to there, real close, I mean, it may not be on the...
I think it ends in that general area, it might go to Alcorn.
I think you're right, I think it does go to Alcorn.
I think it goes past Alcorn, because I remember seeing it.
Yeah, it might go slightly past.
Slightly past it, so that's what I said, we didn't show well or water, and I don't know whether, but obviously, water's going to go underground, so.
So for your waivers, I really think it behooves everybody, if you do pave the new driveway, I think that people who live there will appreciate it, it solves some of the issues that fire has, and if you're going to be paving that new driveway, I appreciate the existing driveway, it's grandfathered, so, as much as possible, it could stay the way it is now, but I believe that the part, both the quote "road," as well as the common driveway part, I believe that everything up until where the driveway split should be paved. You're saying that just paving, that the steep part will help with the water, with the runoff problems, and, but it might as well just do it all the way up to where the driveway split, because you're going to be going further, and it would be silly to have paved gravel paved, you know, that kind of stuff. I'm okay with the no circular turnaround, and I'm okay with the less than 400 feet. Let's see, number three, since you said you're going to, you would propose having utilities underground, I'm okay with that. Number four, with the curbing, I would defer to engineering when they go through the design with you, if they feel that some curbing is required for stormwater purposes, then that would be it, you know, but if they say it's not needed, then I would be okay with the Cape Cod berm. The part... The part, let's see, the sixteen feet, that's for the common driveway, or that...
Yes. That's short section.
So, you might...
Here.
I would kind of want to keep it sixteen feet. It's a short piece, but you never know. You could have two cars at the same time or something. Let's see, then the waiver for paving, as I said, I would not, I would have to go to the site, and you'd have to really, really convince me of the value of not paving the whole common roadway part. And then, the one with the sidewalks, yeah. That would, I, I'm okay with that. That's it.
Thanks, Kate.
I, yeah, that's it.
Thanks, Kate. Mike?
So, my only concern would be the runoff, and I think that however it's designed, so long as engineering is happy that the runoff problem's going to be solved with either that settling basin or whatnot, you know, then I'm fine with the waivers. I somewhat disagree with Kate. I kind of like the rural character of the, the dirt roads, the driveways going back. If I could live back in the woods, I think I'd have a dirt driveway. I'm glad the utility's going to be underground, but other than that, so long as the fire department's going to be happy and engineering's going to be happy with the, with the runoff, I'm, I'm okay with the waivers.
Thanks, Mike. Darren?
Yeah, I would agree. So, you know, I'll be curious to see how it works out with fire, you know, fire safety, what, what happens there, but, yeah, the runoff is the main thing, as I explained. I live off of Flag Road as well, and just to, for the record, we saw the, the letter that came in from the Green Woods. They live, I guess, west on Flag Road, so they get, I think, the brunt of this kind of runoff and weather events. So, if, I'd love to see engineering's kind of resolution here to kind of getting that, getting that taken care of, and whether it requires curbing or whatever it is, I'd love to see that solved. But otherwise, I appreciate the applicant taking into consideration a lot of the comments from the neighbors as well.
Yeah, and I think from my side, you know, what you're hearing, this board has some familiarity with fairly innocuous-looking small subdivisions in hilled terrain with runoff issues that come from a multitude of areas, resulting in a lot of follow-up meetings and discussions regarding where the water is coming from. I have absolutely no interest in that happening again with, with this particular small and seemingly innocuous subdivision plan. Philosophically, I'd like to see the roadway paved for the entire distance that is the actual road. That said, I do agree with what Mike's point is, which is, I sort of defer to engineering on the best way to handle the water. I mean, you, you refer to it as country drainage, I think, which is essentially water's going to run, generally speaking, downhill, right, and pool in an area that's low. I would defer totally to the engineering department on whether the best way to do that is by having it sheet across pavement with some amount of curbing to control and channel that water where it should be going and not where it should not, or if leaving it in a natural state unpaved actually allows for some better absorption of the water into the, you know, across the roadway. So, yeah, those are pretty much my comments.
So, Dylan, I have one follow-up. After having heard what you and I think Mike and Darren spoke of, and that if this is a dirt driveway, I'd like us to pay some attention to how the utility trench is dealt with, because we've had issues in the past with utility trenches on steep terrains before they were paved over. And in this case here, if it's going to be dirt, then we're going to have to make sure that that trench is sufficiently packed and protected, so we don't have that washing out downhill.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point.
So, that's kind of a note to town engineering. We, we had a famous incident twenty-two years ago up on the Tingsboro Line where the trench washed out.
Okay.
So, I'd be concerned with this if we're not going to be paving over it.
My, I was, last, my only other comment was, you, you have it, the road, the driveway just twelve feet, but really, what you're going to have to carve out to put in that driveway to the new house will probably require more cut into the hill than, than what you show. So, there will, might be at least six feet in some sections, six to eight feet that might get cut out, and how to deal with that, and whether you have to make a, some kind of a slope, or is a wall sufficient, that kind of stuff. So, I'm still concerned about the driveway because of the narrow space. If the hill could get moved over twenty feet, that would be great. But, go for it.
Okay. Before we go to the abutters...
Can I comment, just a few comments?
Sure, please, of course.
Kate, your last comment is, is kind of prescient, I think. There will be areas where we may need to put some reinforced, you know, some sort, whether it be a wall or something steeper than two to one. So, it, it's, it's an important point. We don't know that, neither Jeremy and I do, until it's state, and, and we have a lot more topos, but you're probably right. The road, you know, it's not going to always work out, so that we just happen to be at the toe of the slope everywhere where I want the road to be, because we moved it fifteen feet. We may be inside the slope a little bit, and therefore, we have to deal with that. So, that probably is going to happen. I don't have the detailed information yet, but, so it's a good point to note that when we do come for final.
I think if it had to be more than four feet, that would cause a problem.
I agree, knowing that building inspectors position on that, and engineering position on that. I also want to talk to you a little bit about Darren, Mike, and Dylan's concern. I agree that, let, let us get the data first. I mean, we, all we have is just general topography now. When we have real topography, we'll find out where, if we do need to concentrate it or not. And I'm glad you brought that up, because we don't have it solved yet. All I'm saying is, we can solve it. We've solved much harder things than this. And I, and I do take your point on other projects in other parts of town that have had struggles, and then you and the neighbors have been talking about projects for months on months and months. I know what you're talking about, and we don't want that here as well.
Well, I heard two hills. I heard waters flowing in different ways, so, you know, I'm sure there's water coming from a lot of places.
Yeah. So, we're, we're on that, but the good news, we have good soils here, not terrible soils. And, and they're not sandy gravels, but they're not bad soils either, so I, I appreciate all the comments we've received.
So, before we go to the public who are here, maybe to offer some comments and ask some questions, have, do you feel like the board is satisfied, your asks that you had when you came before us, to hear sort of general direction on the...
I feel satisfied, yes, thank you.
Great. With that, then, we'll open it up to the public. If anybody from the public is here to make comments on this article, please step up, state your name for the record. You come to the microphone if you could, because that way you'll be picked up.
I've got little kids, so I want to go first, if that's okay with all of you.
Oh, yeah, okay. Please, to the microphone, just state your name and address for the record.
Cheers. Would you guys mind if I borrowed that?
No.
Thank you. I'd like to write notes.
Hello, my name is Vimalan Rajalingam. I'm number ten, you can call me Vim. Thank you for the opportunity. Just looking at the map, I just had a bunch of concerns, and I just wanted to bring that up, and obviously, we have an engineer, so we'll go from there. So, it's not clear to me, is this bulb going to be cleared out? Is that supposed to be leveled, or no?
The, that is a...
Paper.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Bren, please correct me if I am speaking correctly. That is just a theoretical bulb that would not actually be constructed.
So, you're not going to cut trees or anything of that nature?
That's correct. They're actually not proposing to change the roadway entering the parcel at all. That's just a theoretical dimension to show you where the roadway would be for the purposes of...
Sure, okay. So, if the fire department has any sort of turning radius and all of that, that has to happen over here?
Correct.
Okay. I've walked this area, and like Kate said, I've seen how steep this is. As you can see just from the map, this is four thirty, and that's four hundred, so that's a thirty-foot drop right there.
Yep.
And this road will be going in a section that is a four-feet differential at the minimum. And if this frontage is two hundred feet, you're looking at three to four hundred feet, I mean, three hundred feet, where you will have to cut level just for that road. And how does that affect the backs of both of these properties? And Mr. Bren over here has proposed a fence from here to here. If this is four hundred feet, do you really believe a builder's going to put up a fence that long? Just a question, right? And the other aspect here is, this house, number eight, is thirty-three hundred square feet. The proposed house is supposed to be four hundred, four thousand square feet. That's not the scale. That's smaller than that, right? So, if it was the real scale, it's more like number, you know, it will go from here to eighty. If that's the case, where does this go? That has to push out here, which means, look at the contours here. This is ten feet. You have another twelve, that's twelve feet that you have to level out. And one more point, this is two hundred feet. Here's the septic, and there is the house. Two hundred feet away, and there's a ten-to-twelve-feet incline that you have to go over. So, from the dwelling, you're pumping septic twelve feet higher and a hundred and fifty feet away. And there's a pool right here. I, this is my backyard. I have a huge eight-foot drop right here, so I know how steep that is. This is what the septic has to go over, right? And this house, if it's drawn to scale, has to either come closer to this property line, or you'll have to level out a whole bunch more land to put that turn radius. So, just, I'm, I'm not trying to be, you know, fancy here, but I'm just simply reading the chart, and I see the contours, and the contours are from the town.
Yep.
So, there's a lot of concerns. So, if you're cutting up all of this stuff, what happens to a water runoff here? Are we going to start collecting this side? Are we going to collect this side? And what happens to all of this? And I truly don't believe a builder's going to put up a three-hundred-foot privacy fence. So, that's all I had to say.
Thank you very much. Comment?
Thanks. I may make a comment. So, I, actually, I wanted to bring up that fence. I mean, in, in my opinion, obviously, I don't know that I would even want the fence. I think that if you've got a fifteen-foot no-cut zone that may or may not be mature now, but at some point would be, again, the rural look of that driveway with trees along there, and trees on the other side, I think the, the fence might detract from it, but...
I had the same thought.
Sorry, just one last thing, if I may.
Please, of course.
I'm sorry. So, this part is usually frozen over, but there's a bunch of trees there, and you guys, if you drive by in the winter, you'll see that it's frozen over. The sun comes from here. So, with all the houses and trees, this driveway is frequently going to be frozen over, because here's the slope. So, everything that's dripping off here is going to pool in that driveway. And with all the tree shades and the houses there, you're not going to get sun there. So, how is that fire department going to get there? And what about in spring, when you have full runoff over there? So, it's either going to be a heavy gravel road or a frozen road that's hard to maintain. And if the owner starts salting, how much are you going to put?
Yeah. Just so you, for your information, so again, so this would have to go through stormwater management review with...
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
With them. So, your, your concerns about runoff would hopefully be addressed at that point, and all of that will be regulated through our engineering department anyway.
We, we do a thorough review on all projects, even, you know, single lots like this or two lots.
Sounds good, thank you.
Please, step up, state...
So, if I may, I have little kids, I have to go up.
Yeah, of course.
Sorry, thank you.
Where he goes, can I answer one of his questions?
Sure.
Excuse me.
Sir?
Sir.
Mr. Bren is offering to answer at least one of your questions before you go.
Yeah, where you go, because you're not going to hear my answers when I do it at the end.
I just wanted to say, the septic system, you know, it's going to have to meet all the Board of Health regulations, and the town Board of Health regulations. This does, you're right, it is a pump, and we pump things all the time, and we meet all the septic regulations for the town and the state. So, I just want you to know that.
Great, thank you.
No waivers in.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, folks.
Thank you very much. Sir, just your name and address for the...
Yeah, my name is Sung Woo Son.
You can, you don't have to lean over.
No, I... A L corn. Since being mentioned, all the kind of the slope, I just want to point out that. So, I live here, and usually, I see a lot of trees down in here, because this area itself is kind of, because of the slope, all kind of the water kind of hucking in this area. So, it itself is very weak, so that's why I see a lot of pollution here. Because of that slope, we usually see, I, I think that you can find the information, there are multiple trees down in here, because that's a water hole came down from here, and this six A corn has a gutter, and all water is going to be flowing down to this road. So, I see the same issue in here. So, because of creating another new road in here, I don't know how that kind of thing, this is a currently kind of buffer to the older A corn in this area here, but I don't know how that can be handled. That's, that's kind of my concern here. And then, the, the reason why septic is here, because when they investigate this area, this is a too soggy area. I think that's why the builder had another system in here, because this is more like a sunny area, and it has more kind of surface to absorb water from this house. Although it's a kind of using pump, you can pump water from, to the, this area, but again, this is a very steep area. I think we will all flow down to the twelve and maybe ten as well. So, anyway, it's a kind of long driveway, asking this, the waiver to begin with, but along the construction, we see a lot of issues. And obviously, engineering team will, will try to come up with a solution, but still, yeah, because of this sloppiness, even if the proposed road is a minimum, right? And I think I posted, attached the photo, I have taken from this side, you can easily see the slope, and how narrow this area.
Yep.
And then, as you, I think, one of the board members mentioned, right? In order to make this road clear, you need kind of more cut on here, this side as well.
Yep.
Regardless whether this is unpaid or paved, I think there will be a more issue on, on all these properties.
Yep.
So, that's my concern.
Yep. Well, thank you very much for that. Good evening.
Good evening. Rob Forersanger, three Alcorn crossings. So, I live across the street over here.
Yep.
My biggest concern is the impact on Alcorn Crossing in general. There's a lot of waivers that have to go on. There's regulations put in place to prevent things that shouldn't happen. There's a lot of waivers going on right here. If you look at this house right here, it's practically on Alcorn Crossing. This isn't a subdivision of Flag Road. This is a subdivision into Alcorn Crossing. Can I ask how many people have actually gone and seen the site on the board? Can I see a raise of hands?
I haven't done it yet.
I have nothing. Okay, so, maybe you can talk to the fact of how close a house would be to Alcorn Crossing right there. I'm just saying, from someone who's actually seen the site on the board.
Yeah, I didn't measure it, but I mean, I mean, there's plenty of roads that are but other roads, and you can see the houses from them, so I don't know...
I understand, but what I'm, what my concern is, is the impact on Alcorn Crossing.
What impact are you concerned?
Aesthetics. Because the house is going to be very good. This subdivision wasn't designed to have houses, quote, shoehorned in. And the other concern I have is knowing...
I'll say it if you don't want to say it. Aesthetics is not one of the conditions that the board has to consider.
I understand that.
Just want you to know that.
Yeah, but I, I also want the board to understand that people are getting impacted here, and it's going to be aesthetics.
Yeah, we, we understand, we, I hear your concern in this, yeah.
My other concern is that this is all fine and well, the way it's proposed, but I know firsthand that builders don't have to follow what is on this. It's happened to me personally. Houses have moved, trees that weren't supposed to get cut, get cut, all those things. So, what kind of guarantee do we have, if you let this go, that this is actually what's going to happen? It's all nice and well that they say, "Oh, we'll do this, we'll do that," but then reality hits, cost hits, and we know what happens. And at that point, we don't have much recourse, do we?
Could I just, let me ask one question in relative to your concerns, one question
Could I just, let me ask one question in relative to your concerns, one question to Jeff here. I'm looking at the fifteen-foot no-cut zone. And I think to his point, that no-cut zone does not really extend into the corner of the lot. Am I admit, is that possible?
Yeah, it ends here because there's a house here that what we're trying to protect. This, just so you know, this distance, it's fifty feet from the property corner to the closest point in Alcorn. Then is at least, well, there's at least fifteen feet with a side yard setback and thirty feet in this direction. So even if the house were to move, the closest it would be to the right of way would be seventy feet. And there's about ten feet of shoulder. So you're eighty feet to the edge of the roof, to the pavement. That's the closest it could be. And we're showing it much further than that. So there is, there is a significant difference. Bringing that fence over, and I don't know if we're talking about a fence now because I think Michael and I think Darren are questioning whether the fences, you know, you're right because every builder wants to build one of those white PVC fences. That's, you know, because that's low-cost, low-maintenance. And that would be a dramatic difference.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm asking if this fifteen-foot could be wrapped around the corner and all the way down to where it would extend between ten and twelve. The no-cut.
The no-cut, yes, absolutely, Michael. It's in the setback anyway, so there's no reason.
Right. So I think if we could keep that fifteen, that, that no-cut wrapped right all the way down here.
Well, it is.
Can I call you Michael and say, Mr. Schaefer?
This is all no-cut.
The no-cut's right there. That's not no-cut.
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you. That's, that's just a setback. The no-cut ends right here.
Yeah, but you'd have to think, are they gonna,
And there is trees between the property line and Alcorn. That's, you'll see that when you eventually go to the site. There are trees there as well.
Yeah, there's not that many. The house is gonna, it's gonna definitely intrude on Alcorn.
Yep.
Yep.
Few other things, like for instance, the, uh, underground utilities. Can that be guaranteed?
Part of our decision.
Yeah, yeah. It, it, that's a condition of approval. So yes, that would be guaranteed.
Okay. Obviously, these people don't wanna be looking at telephone poles in their backyard when they have nice woods now.
Yep.
Fire department. Does a sprinkler system negate the, all the requirements for, uh, safety?
Well, that was a lot of dialogue we had earlier, right? I, I think there has to be further and deeper conversation between the applicant and the fire department to figure out like, what exactly is the fire department prepared to, I guess, agree to not want enforced with how this gets developed based upon putting a sprinkler system. So it's kind of a to-be-determined.
And even, even if they're okay with a waiver, the board might not be okay with the waiver.
Yeah. What, what do the, uh, what do the butters have for, for recourse? The fire department could say, it, because they still have to get emergency vehicles down there. Somebody's having a heart attack. You know, you still gotta send the fire truck down there, right?
Yep.
So it's still gotta turn around. Putting a sprinkler system in, it doesn't really help too much.
Right. Yep.
Right? So if the fire department somehow says, yeah, sprinkler system's good, everything else is okay, what recourse do we have? Can we appeal that?
Uh,
Yeah.
Technically, you could. Yeah, you can appeal anything you want. But I think Mr. Brennan, as he indicated earlier, has to talk with the fire chief and find out, for example, the roadway in question, would the fire chief want that road, that entire length of that driveway paved? Or would he, he be okay having it be a gravel surface?
And is he okay with keeping it at twelve feet?
Right.
Because it is so long.
Uh, runoff's gonna be a problem. Number eight, there is this, uh, drainage right in front of it. It's constantly running. There's always water running down in here, so I'd be very concerned. Because this will probably be, most likely be cleared all the way up to the, to the, to the line.
Well, he, that's what I just asked for.
He just asked to have the no-cut continued and extended around the entire corner of the property. So it wouldn't be clear to the edge.
So it'll go this way?
Yep.
And down. I'd ask that it go down to protect all the way down to twelve.
Yep.
And I, and also, the stormwater management review would be if there is a runoff issue, that they would look at options to try and improve it.
Yeah, they won't be able to discharge more runoff than currently discharges today. And a lot of times, they put some sort of drainage controls along entire driveways like this to make sure it captures that runoff and it doesn't flow into, you know, abutting properties or roads.
I'm not a, an expert in planning by any means, but this is a subdivision now. It's basically has, has two lots on a road. Does that make these corner lots? And would setbacks change?
They're not corner lots, no.
Yeah, no. And therefore, yeah, setbacks would not change.
Setbacks are defined on here. They, they, they're well-defined as to what's the side, what's the rear, what's the front setback.
Okay.
If it were on the corner of Flag and Main, then it, then it would be a corner lot.
All right, on, on the wetland side, this is not gonna be paved. It's just the driveway that they're proposing?
Yep.
All right, that's all I have for now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please, step up. State your name and address for the record, please, and then your comments.
My name is Kathy Lee from Eight Alcorn Crossing. So I have a big concern about safety of our property when with this proposed long driveway going through behind our property. Either paved or unpaved, I have a safety concern. Because currently, with all the trees in the back of our property, still the trees come down with the heavy rain. So if the trees will have to be cut down to create this driveway, also the proposed new property, then I have a concern of those trees coming down. Also, like, a resident from One Main, they have concern that they, from their experience, they had, like, experiences with gravels coming down from the other property behind their, their property. So how, how can we make sure that there's no gravel coming down? Especially when it's unpaved towards our property.
Because engineering will have to look at their plans and make sure that the plan is, um, compliant with our stormwater management, which means that they can't have water running off into the neighbor's yards. So it has to be designed for that, to prevent that.
So especially if it's unpaved, the, the concern is bigger?
Uh, depending on how engineering looks at it, they'll probably look at it however it's presented by the applicant. But it could have positive and negative effects either way. But they'll have to take either way into account.
Yeah, my other concern is, like, uh, it was mentioned that all of these proposals are currently preliminary and non-binding. How do you make sure anything discussed, any proposal discussed in this planning gets executed at the end of the day? That's my concern.
So this plan won't be executed, right? So this is preliminary. They asked for our opinion on it, public's opinion. And so they'll come before us then with the, with the, the actual plan and we'll go through the process again.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so, so this is, this is not the plan as it would be built. This is preliminary. To Mike's point, what happens now is they will go back, they will work with the different town departments, they'll talk to the fire department, all the things that we're talking about tonight, and they'll come back with a definitive subdivision plan. And there'll be a whole other round of these discussions that we'll talk about.
But in the decision, we do create a decision for the preliminary plan. And we either accept it as proposed or we accept it, we, we concur with it with modifications, or we say we think this is not a good plan. And if we do it, if we concur with the, the thought, then our decision will list all the, the things that we say have to be thought about before they come with the, with the actual plan. So all of the concerns about the runoff and, and how much of the pavement should be paved and such, that will be in, in this decision.
And I think as Jeff mentioned earlier, the reason they do this is to just create a bare minimum plan to save money in the long term, collect the comments, and then take those comments and go back. And when they do the definitive, factor those in. It also can have a bearing if zoning changes, but.
Yeah. So, so it, he hears, before he's done a lot of, spent a lot of money, he hears everything that he has to put into the final plan.
So I'm not an expert about all this planning. So there was a mention about the well going probably around this area. So I have, I would like to, like, know more about, like, what's the plan with the water.
Can I address that?
Sure.
So if it is a well, we have to make sure that the well is a hundred feet from this septic system, fifty feet from this septic tank, fifty feet from any other septic tank, and a hundred feet from any other septic system. So we have to do a lot of research, which hasn't been done yet. So my guess is the well's probably gonna be somewhere in this general area, because that way I can assure myself that we're a hundred feet away from everything. So I was gonna draw it here and I said, I don't know yet, so I won't draw it yet. But if we, if I had a guess, it would probably be in this general area here. Because that way I could assure that we meet all the requirements.
Yeah, that's all my concern.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Please, step up. Name, address for the record, and then your comments.
Dave Lorello, Six Alcorn. I guess one of the concerns I have is the driveway and how much space hacks, has to be cut in order to put the underground utilities and whatever else has to go. I don't know if it's, I heard town water or well water hasn't been decided yet. So you may have a water main that has to go, or water line has to go to that back house. You may have underground utilities that have to go to the back house. I don't know how they have to be separated. I'm not familiar with the law. But what I would hate to see is that that space has to be cut for a twelve-foot driveway. You may have to cut seventeen, eighteen feet, whatever the footage is, to get these other things buried. Now you're really cutting into that hill. And it's, it's, again, I, someone suggested, go check out the property. Go, go take a peek and look at that hill. It's like a very, very steep hill and you're gonna really cut into it. And I know the board doesn't care about aesthetics. I know you don't care about aesthetics. You said that. But the reality is
Do you?
The reality is, the reality is, all of us that are but this property, the view we have today is gonna radically change. And if there's, you know, four or five-foot cement retaining walls holding back, um, the, the hill and along this buffer, there aren't all trees. There's some sparse trees, so it's just gonna really be an open area. And we've been there for twenty years. You buy a piece of property, it looks a certain way, and now it's gonna be totally different. And I know that's an aesthetic issue, but my concern is that if this driveway gets wider and wider, the cutout gets wider, that's gonna make it just worse. Like, that should be considered.
I do wanna make a comment. We do care about aesthetics. Many, if you look in our decisions in the past, we've done things as simple as protecting rocks.
Yeah.
So we do look at that. But we have to also remember one thing. We're trying to balance the rights of all landowners. And just because it was there when you first moved there, doesn't prohibit another person from developing the adjacent lot. So we have to balance all sides.
I, I get it. A tough job, but just, please go there and check it out and look at it and step in the butters' property.
If it comes before us for a definitive, we, at that point, we definitely have to.
Yeah, that construction costs with concrete walls are significant, right? Especially along that. I, I'm assuming that whoever's gonna develop this is going to take that into mind and do the path of least resistance. Least amount of concrete they have to put in there for the safest way they could do it because engineering's gonna be on that to make sure it's not getting into the neighbor's yard.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public here to comment? Please, step up. Name, address for the, for the record, and then your comments.
Yep. My name is, uh, Paul Morris. I live on Wagon Trail Road, which is far and distant from this particular proposed subdivision. I happen to live on a, a two-lot private road, so I'm very sympathetic to how these things play out. And, um, one question I would have is, I guess these would be two addressed Flag Road properties and not a separate private road, so that town trash and so forth doesn't come up these small roadways, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, we don't know what the E nine-one-one would require for addresses. It would either be Flag Road or some new road.
But they won't, but they won't have school bus service.
Yeah, they don't have any of the town services per se.
Yeah.
And, and now I want to, I wanted to switch gears a minute and talk about environment. And, um, this is an opportunity for you folks to express an opinion or a preference for how houses are oriented with respect to rooftop, solar, and electrification. Okay, that's where the town is gonna be going. That's where the state demands are gonna be going. And, um, I don't, I, it's difficult for me, having walked this property, to see whether a house could be oriented such that it would be preference, in a preference, preferential way, for solar rooftop, uh, which actually can be a benefit for those who are buying into, buying into the property. And whether, I don't know whether gas utility is up in this area of town or not, or whether this will be, there is, okay. You know, there's, there should be a, um, a preference for electrification and getting away from carbon emission. And when you start with a clean piece of paper, it's probably cost-neutral to actually go all-electric than it is to bring piping and gas and so forth, utilities up these long roads. So it's something that I'd like the board to start to think about when they have conversations in these preliminary stages with these type of subdivisions to give some consideration for the net-zero future that the town and the state and the country and the world is trying to move towards in the next couple of years. If you listen to the the news today, it's coming at us really quickly. So I, that's, that's an opinion that I just wanted to express in a public forum.
Great. Thank you for your comments.
Can I comment on that too?
Sure.
It's a great comment, and that's why we had the building-oriented way we had it previously. So that was solar-ready, so to speak. Now it's not solar-ready. So there's your contradictions that you're gonna be dealing with in the future. Making something solar-ready may not be what the community wants, may not be what the developer wants, may not be what the board wants, may not be what engineering wants. You're gonna be playing these competing interests.
So hold on. So just so that we're clear, the way that you've oriented it in this plan puts the front of the house facing Alcorn, correct?
South is here.
So, yeah, but the front of the house is now facing Alcorn.
Facing Alcorn, correct.
But based on the pitch of the roof that you're proposing,
This way.
It will not be facing the southerly direction.
You need, you need, we need to move it ninety degrees.
But it'll be facing east and west.
So there's the competing interests that you're gonna be dealing with, which is a great point, and I'm glad you brought it up because should we look at solar as our interest? Should we look at aesthetics as our interest? And so we've given up on the solar and gone and went with the aesthetics. Because we kind of felt that's what the board wanted, that's what the neighborhood wanted. But you're giving up something else.
Correct. Okay. Uh, any other comments from the audience? Please, step up. Name and, uh, address for the, for the record, and then your comments.
I'm Jonathan Wilder. Own the property. Question. Want to address the, the, the butters' issues about privacy and aesthetics. We've been there thirty-five years. We built the house, there's nobody around us. So we've been affected. It's not saying it's right or wrong, but we've been affected by the butters over the years.
Yep, yep.
We were given the opportunity to build this house, have a family in Westford. Now we'd like to have someone else have the opportunity to build the house in Westford. So that's where we're at.
Gotcha.
And we're trying not to change things any more than we have to, to make a buildable lot. Keep everybody happy.
Yeah. Appreciate your comments.
Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else from the public here to comment?
I can hear. Sorry.
All right. Uh, okay. So given all that we've heard, are we prepared to draft a decision, Joe?
I would like to have one.
I would agree. I feel like in this case, we, we would benefit from looking at a draft decision unless the board feels strongly otherwise.
No.
No, why?
I feel like to see.
We're not gonna hold them up there.
We're not gonna start the construction anyway, so.
Yeah, so you continue. We could draft a decision. You could consider it at the next meeting.
Yep, I think that makes sense.
If I may interrupt.
Please.
If the Wilders are from Maine, I don't rather have not come all the way down here now. I mean, they live in the house too, there's back and forth, but uh, so I'm gonna suggest they not come at the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
And if there's no need for me to come as well to keep costs down and so forth, if Joe sends me the preliminary in advance and I don't have an issue with it, then I wouldn't have to come either, so you may not see me again.
Yeah, that's fine. If you have comments and if you write them up, then in the packet, we'll all read them, so.
Exactly. So I just want you to know, a lot of times, where's Mr. Brennan?
That's fine. That's fine. Keeping, being efficient with costs is fine.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. All right, so, um, is there a motion to continue?
Well, we don't.
We don't really need to. It's a general, it's a general business topic. So I guess we will be seeing, do you think we'll have a draft in the next meeting?
I think you could do that, yeah.
Okay, great. All right, so then we'll.
But at least we don't have a time constraint or anything like that. But other than Wilders would like to know what to do.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you to the public for your comments tonight. They were very good comments.
And I hope you've learned a little bit about planning.
Yes.
Okay. Are the rooms gonna clear, but we can, uh, continue to move?
Yeah.
If, yeah. Quiet, so that's great.
I just ask you, please be quiet out in the hallways.
Yep. Okay, uh, our next general business item B is PB nineteen-twenty-three, definitive subdivision and stormwater management permanent seventy-three Downing Road. This is to discuss progress of the sidewalk extension plan, which was a required condition of approval, uh, for the approval of the Wendell Place subdivision. Good evening.
I know. Who are you?
Just, just leave that anywhere.
So I can use you.
Someone will come through and fix it up.
I knew this was gonna happen.
Cleaning staff here.
I'm still blaming Jeff somehow. I don't know.
This is Wendy who's helping each other out. Just get it to my office.
Yes, to my board.
You got it. There you go. Didn't I tell you, Joe, this was gonna happen?
Yeah.
And I, I want to apologize for not being at the last meeting. This came up. I went to log on and you were here. And I And I wasn't. There's no E needed.
That's okay.
We fooled you.
Land Tech needs to charge more money and get himself an easement.
Seriously.
Stringer interest there, sorry. Good evening. Matt Waterman, Land Tech Consultants. I'm Kathleen Coyle is here, representing the landowners for.
I have a question. Do we get, does the public get a copy of the draft decision?
It'll be in the next meeting packet.
Okay.
And that's all available through the town website.
We're here for the sidewalk extension for Nutting Road, Wendell Place. I think most of the members are familiar with Wendell Place and it's been on the agendas over the last couple of years, dating back to 2017. As part of the definitive subdivision approvals and in lieu of sidewalk waivers, one of the conditions, number 66, included a shovel-ready design to connect the subdivision to Depot Street. It's approximately 1,700 feet, all within the right-of-way, with the exception of a small section along the Nutting Road fields. And it provides connectivity both to the Nutting Fields, but to the subdivision, Depot Street, and the adjacent trail system along the former trolley line or the mass electric easement that currently exists. I'm sure everyone's seen the sidewalk extension. I know it's in your packets. And Joe has it up on the screen overhead. We have it here in case anyone wants to come look at it in greater detail. We've had several technical review sessions, both with engineering and planning staff. We've met with them on numerous occasions at their office, on Zoom calls. And we've been in the field a couple of times, going through a couple of alternatives and locations and making sure we're providing the information that they expect along Nutting Road from a survey standpoint. We've broken up the project into two phases. There's a phase that goes from Wendell Place, which is on the screen overhead, to the Nutting Road Fields, and then a second phase, which would go from the Nutting Road Fields to Depot Street. The project, Phase 1 is from, the first phase, going from Wendell Place to the Nutting Road Fields is approximately 850 feet long. It's on the south side of the road. Is one crosswalk. It's at the Wendell Place subdivision. Sorry, Joe. I'm going to bounce around. We did consider one alternative with this, which would be at the north side of the road. That was our first alternative. But when you get out in the field and the crosswalk scenarios, there was grading challenges once you get off-site from Wendell Place to the east, further east, with there's some driveways that are steeper than some of the other driveways. And so the driveway, you know, the preference was to have that sidewalk on the south side and then you come into the Nutting Road Fields and you're able to bring that sidewalk into the Nutting Road, or into the Fields, where you have, you know, that 10-foot separation. There's kind of the hierarchy in the master plan for sidewalks, where if you can get it 10 feet off the road, that's the first choice. And then you bring it closer to the road and you provide curbing and less of a grass strip in between. And so this alternative on the south side of the road lent itself to that. Secondly, there's the Conservation Commission and there's wetlands on the northerly side of Nutting Road in this stretch. And so that was, we felt that, you know, the better solution was to push that sidewalk further away from the wetland areas, trying to manage. It would have been well within the 50-foot buffer. And so those are just, so the point is that we did go through alternatives with both phases. Phase 2 is from the Nutting Roads to Depot Street. Alternative 1, again, we were on the south side of the road, just thinking that that was more feasible, at least when you start off at the Nutting Road Fields and you're kind of looking towards Depot Street. There's a nice clear span and there's nice site distances there. It eliminates a crossing. But then when you get closer into this view and you get to the intersection, the grades just really drop off on that south side. There's a guardrail there. And so there would be significant more tree clearing, grading, just to get that sidewalk on that south side of the road. And so then we came back with this alternative, putting it on the north side of the road. And there was, I think, some additional challenges that Jeremy had picked up on that the retaining wall for the cemetery right at the intersection would have to get looked at a little bit more detail, which was one of the primary points of kind of phasing this project, feeling that you could build Phase 1 and then kind of, you know, get into the details of what is required for construction with that retaining wall. And so we felt like that maybe was the best opportunity to get the project going and make a determination on that cemetery section. Nobody likes digging next to a cemetery. The crosswalks, we went into the, there's, preference was to keep the crosswalks at intersections. And so with the first one being at Wendell Place, we did all the site distance calc's with the subdivision road. So the site distance there was, you know, 350 feet plus with the grading and the site clearing that occurs with the subdivision. The second crosswalk would be right at the Nutting Road Fields. That would be part of Phase 2. So you would get the sidewalk with Phase 1 to the Fields. And then when you decide to build Phase 2, you would build that second crosswalk. That crosswalk had a little more concerns or challenges with site distance, not necessarily on the south side of the road from a pedestrian traveling to the north, leaving the Nutting Road Fields and crossing the road. Site distance was good in both directions for our vehicles. It was on the north side, on the inside corner. There's a telephone pole that would have to get relocated. In my opinion, I, we meet the 200-foot site distance if the person's, you know, kind of wobbling back, it's hard to tell exactly, but you do have the 200 feet plus of site distance. But the recommendation is to have the pole pulled back and ensure that the safety is there, obviously with the pedestrian crossing. The wetlands, I know that they've commented, we talked quickly. The wetlands are shown on this plan. They've issued a comment relative to the conservation restriction associated with the Nutting Road Fields. The Nutting Road Fields are part of the East Boston Camps. It was all part of that whole thing. It was reserved for recreational use. The Conservation Commission is in charge of managing, you know, the East Boston Camps proper. And then the Nutting Road Fields, I would have to assume is managed by the, either the Parks and Rec or someone that manages that. But it's managed by the town of Westford. And so there is a requirement that you would have to notify, you know, the person that manages the property, the town of Westford, and the land trust to secure, you know, the rights to be able to put that sidewalk. But I don't think there's anything in the CR, at least that prohibits it, nothing specifically. So we're comfortable with that. It would be no different than securing an easement from a abutters for any temporary work. We're here tonight. We feel like we've put a lot of effort into this process. We've met with the town staff on several occasions. We're looking for the board for some confirmation of the process moving forward. Kathleen's here. They're in the, they're looking to market this property and so the process is important to that. And we're looking for some direction on the board that we feel like we've met that standard, that we provided that plan that's shovel-ready. It's kind of a, not very well-defined term as far as when that is complete. But it's our opinion that we could turn this over to the town and we're looking for the board's direction on that.
Great. Well, thank you. Well, fortunately, we have engineering with us.
So as Matt stated, we've met a couple of times. I think we had two sidewalks, like you said, a Zoom meeting. Just like most sidewalk projects in town, it's not easy and straightforward, so, you know. But I think in general, we do support the current layout, conceptual layout, just like the board to know that there will be, you know, there'll be impacts, just like most sidewalks, there'll be temporary easements that are acquired, permanent easements. There is a CR on the Nutting Road Fields property, so that will require review and approval by the Westford Land Preservation Foundation, who is a CR holder for that property. I don't see why it would be an issue. You know, it's providing access to this recreational facility. It does get us off the road too, so it's safer in that area. That was one of the, I think, the goals, so it doesn't impact drainage, becomes a little safer, like I said. I too question a little bit with Matt, you know, the shovel-ready, what that really, really means. You know, a typical sidewalk project for us, if we would advance it, there's a policy in town that we have to go to the pedestrian safety committee to have them review it, offer comments. And typically that meeting, all the direct abutters are noticed so they can come out and offer their comments and opinion because they will be directly affected. Like I said, several easements, it will require stone walls to be moved, fences potentially to be moved and adjusted, which is typical on sidewalk projects. But, you know, we do like to get the input of the public. So it'd be our recommendation that it go through that process, the same type of process that we'd go through because it's a, you know.
Like we did with Plain Road, yeah.
Yep, correct.
Before we deem it shovel-ready or?
I mean, my opinion, if you go to pedestrian safety, they may have different comments that may influence design potentially.
Because this is a 75% design, so they need to get any comments about are there going to be issues with easements and such to know, do they have to do some tweaking to get a final design where you could go out and put it to bid if you would put it to bid? Or that the town, if they built it, they would know this is, this is where it's going.
Public input is very important. It's going to be a public sidewalk.
Yeah.
And there will be abutters that are directly affected and the applicant won't be part, I don't believe, won't be party or won't be part of acquiring those easements because it will be through the town and through the abutters. So I think they need to have a voice and, you know, be able to comment.
Yeah, I did note, I did send an email to the pedestrian safety committee letting them all know that this is coming up, that it's on our agenda for tonight. And I think it is a good idea to go to the pedestrian safety committee. Number one, it's Zoom. They're still Zoom, so you don't have to come in person. But to get the comment, because when we did Plain Road, they, because the people who live there know all the little tweaks that you miss. And so we have not officially set our meeting. It's usually, it's a Wednesday night. Our last one was actually a Thursday night, I think. But you could talk with Chris Barrett, who's the chair. Could probably do it the week of April 18th because I would assume the abutter notices are just letters. They don't have to be certified or. They don't.
I just don't as of the meeting, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I think.
They don't, it's not like a two-week requirement or anything like that.
So I think, if I'm hearing the applicant correctly, I mean, they're looking for guidance on what is shovel-ready, right? I mean, my presumption would have been that they produce the plan and hand it off to pedestrian safety. I mean, I can't expect these folks to have to go get the easements and release the conservation restrictions and all that stuff.
No, I agree with that.
Maybe.
It's just that this is a 75% plan, so.
Well, I mean, I don't know how you get 100% planning.
I don't know what the 100%.
You're getting them to bid and.
Wait, I have something, on to your point. I seem to recall that at the time that we were hearing the Wendell Place subdivision, and I believe Paul was in those, was on those meetings, we didn't have this even funded or anywhere. Like, when would we potentially even construct this?
So we'd have to find a way to construct it. So shovel-ready meaning that you can either put it out to bid or somehow go through capital to raise the funds? So we wouldn't know. Would have the shovel-ready project on the shelf.
Yeah.
So I didn't even go into abutters. I mean, they may not even be there at that point.
Right.
You know what I mean?
That's what I'm, I guess that's what I'm saying is if we don't intend to construct this sidewalk in the next, whatever, 12 to 18 months, does it even make sense to carry it?
So maybe that's a conversation to have with Chris Barrett and pedestrian safety committee. This is where we're at.
Yep.
What's your plan on building this?
Right. Yeah, exactly.
I'm just saying, if something comes up in that and they have to tweak it.
Oh, I don't disagree. Right. I don't think they should just hand it off, but, you know, at some point.
No, I agree. It's the town, I think it's the town's obligation to get the easements and stuff because the town is the one who would be constructing it or making, getting it built.
So there's a question of identifying all the easements that would be required, right? And then there's securing those easements. So you're proposing, unless I misunderstand, you're saying we should at least identify what easements would need to be secured, not saying.
Right. So I believe the easements are shown on here. But I think, as I pointed out, I think just the same process we go through with pedestrian safety just to get the comments of the abutters. And yeah, it may be we don't go through that, acquiring those easements until a later date, which time, you know, could be a change in abutter and, you know.
And a difference of opinion, right?
Right. But, yeah, right. So at some point.
And it's also nice to warn them too.
But at some point, we need to let them off the hook for having made the investment, right? And done the planning that the town, what we heard from Paul was, you know what I mean? Like, I don't want this to be an indefinite hook that they're on the line for.
Maybe ask them one more step, go before sidewalk committee and get their input.
Yeah, yeah.
And then create a plan that engineering says, yeah, we could build this.
And just generally just getting the board's feedback on, do you agree with this layout? Or did you think there was something drastically off of what you were expecting from?
It's fine with me. It's good.
Just for clarity.
Yeah.
We're trying to put this out to bid. This is the gate.
Yep.
That we need to close on the conditions of approval.
Yep.
We're hoping that this meets the conditions of approval. What I'm hearing is potentially not, that you'd like us to go, I'm just clarifying, you'd like us to go before safety committee. And then what? Do we come up with another version of the plan and have to come back here? That's what I think I just heard.
So.
We need to understand what done is.
Let's talk about the layout for a minute because when I read through this in the packet, it didn't seem like without significant effort, you really could lay it out any other way or else you would have. I mean, in the packet, it said you looked at going the entire side on the south side of the street, looked at going the entire way on the north side of the street. Both of them have significant issues that essentially preclude that, hence why we're on the south side of the street until Nutting Road and then on the north side of the street as we go up to Depot.
Correct.
So I guess I'm sort of sympathizing with the applicant here, saying like, so the pedestrian safety committee says, well, we don't really like this layout. We prefer it to be all on one side of the street. Now we're putting them in a position being like, but you can't really, now we're in a catch-22, aren't we?
I absolutely agree. But I think the, in my opinion, I think they should have the right to comment. I think that they've done what they've been allowed to do for us, unless we have issues with it.
Yep.
But since they're the people most likely will be funding it.
Yep.
This is what we have. We're open to comment. We've done all our due diligence. At least give safety a chance to look at it. But I don't think that they need to go much further than that.
I'm sure they're not going to really do much.
No, and I would add the comment to make sure it's clear that the applicant and engineering looked at, looking at north, south. This was the best alternative. And I think we would say, well, we agree. And just want to get your feedback on this before we can wrap it up and say it's a complete plan.
Yeah. I agree with that.
Okay.
I think in the future, I'd like to see us better define what we mean by shovel-ready.
Absolutely.
Because quite frankly, what I would think of as shovel-ready would mean Because quite frankly, what I would think of as shovel-ready would mean it's pretty much ready to go out to bid. And if we are not allowed to go to the pedestrian safety and to the sidewalk committee, I don't consider that being ready to go out to bid.
Well, even still, I think there's a lot of work to do before it goes to bid, that we can't do until we're ready to fund it. I mean, I don't think you can get to that point until we have an idea of when it's going to be funded. You know, so again, what's the cutoff?
Right. Pedestrian safety could potentially weigh into with their prioritization plan where this might fit in or, you know, how it might get funded. You know, typically every year, they're asking for capital for a couple of different sidewalks, so they have a whole plan, I don't know how they'd identify this. It does have a destination with a new, you know, a new subdivision, a fair amount of lots, so.
And frankly, I don't know that this, the pedestrian safety committee has any ability to change it, I think it's just be proper for them to have a look at it before we say, you're all set.
Well, I, I would say if, if this was considered shovel-ready, if we were to go fund it and build it, then we would be going before pedestrian safety with this plan. There could potentially be tweaks that then would be, you know.
You'd be going before the, the selectment.
Well, that's a process, it is to go before the pedestrian safety and then it's to go to the selectment.
Yeah. So, you know, if these plans were sufficient that you could hand them off to a construction company and they know what they have to do and they can build it, to me, that's shovel-ready. I, I agree, the easements, that, that could delay anything or that would be something you keep in the pipeline, that the town has to get the easements and knowing that you can't build it until you get the easements, but if you had the easements, all my, my question is, is there sufficient information in, in the, in the plan that somebody can build it?
I think it requires just a, some additional detailed information.
Yeah, and I, I think the seventy-five percent was just a number to put on there. I think we, me personally, just typically expected some comments, general comments, cleanup-type stuff, and that's that twenty-five percent.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, that we put the majority of the plan together, the details, the temporary easements and what the easements are expected, but typically we would expect some comments to clean up the plan and, and, you know, finalize it.
So I, I'd have a few minor comments that I can work with Matt.
Oh, wait.
The only, the only game stopper that I can think of is if the grantee for the CR says no way, you can put, put the sidewalk on.
Right, and I don't know that that's their responsibility to, to find that out, right? So.
But, but we should, I mean, that's something, if we can find that out in the next two weeks, then we would know.
Yeah, I don't know why they would not want a sidewalk on there if it's bringing people to that recreation land, so.
Yeah, but, but.
It just wouldn't make any sense for them to.
But that's something I, I don't think we should delay for you, Kathy, but, but that's something that we, we have at our end, that we need to get an answer quickly so that we can get her off the hook.
I just, again, I'm going back to those conversations as we were getting close to the final decision on Wendell when this came up as an additional condition, and I remember Paul commenting about the costs, the engineering costs involved with just creating the plan. I don't recall him talking about sort of the procedural machinations that you have to go through to actually get something to the point where you could build it. I mean, you know what I mean? Like, those are sort of like talks with pedestrian safety committee, maybe through the plan a little bit.
Right.
So, I mean, if what we're asking is for them to bring it to the next pedestrian safety committee meeting, and if pedestrian safety is going to hear it, and then they can come back to us at the very next meeting, we can cut them loose, I mean, I guess I'll go along with that, but I mean.
I mean, even if do we have to, I mean, I, I agree with you.
I think, I think it would be nice for the abutters to know it's in the works. It might not happen for five or ten years, but miracles happen, I mean, look at the sidewalks by the ninety-nine.
I don't want this to drag on for four months while these guys are.
No.
Trying to move forward their project as the, as to be.
Yeah, we're not asking to like waive any requirements or ask any waivers, I mean, we're, we just need to close the loop from a marketing standpoint, because you can't have something that's conditioned on your occupancy permits.
Nice question.
That, that is outstanding.
Well, there's one this month, we haven't had it scheduled, and I know Chris has moved our meeting in the past, like, our last one got moved in order to get the abutter input.
Is it before our next meeting?
Would probably be that same week, unless, unless everybody's comfortable, I mean, it would be something where tomorrow an email goes, or tonight an email goes to Chris asking, is there any way we could get it the week of the eleventh, which would be the thirteenth or the fourteenth? That would get it before our next meeting. The, the other alternative is the following week, and it would be after our meeting.
Well, I mean, I, whoever's writing the email to Chris, if you could, you know, express the urgency that, you know, we're, we're happy with the layout.
Yeah.
We just want to get their thoughts before we approve it.
Yeah.
You know, bless it for the applicant, if that makes sense.
Can I ask another question? So Matt, the, the wetland area, if we are on the other side of the road, we're still within the buffer zone, so is that just going to be an RDA?
Yeah, and I talked informally with the, the agent for the conservation, and he felt that that was suitable, it was an RDA, not a full notice of intent application. Which is the simpler of the two processes, you don't have to record the, the order conditions, it's typically just, you know, explaining that your work, but you're not negatively affecting the, the resource area with your work. Where we're on the opposite side of the road, we're as far away from the wetland buffer as possible, we would put in any erosion control in, in the catch basins and things of that nature, kind of just best performance or BNP's.
So the question would be, would they do that or would we do that at a later time when it gets developed?
Again, that would expire if it wasn't done, so I would say that, you know, when it's ready to go.
Yeah.
But at that point, the town's going to have a design.
Right.
To reckon with for the next steps.
Yeah, I feel like that's what we asked for, was a design, because we didn't know when we were going to actually execute this.
Right, yeah. As for pedestrian safety, I originally thought you don't need to go to them, but the only reason to go before them is just to let the abutters know that this is being thought about, they might go, oh, can you build it tomorrow? You never know.
Right, right.
But I don't know that, you're bound by comments of pedestrian safety.
No, you're, you're not.
Yeah.
It's, it's.
It's just a.
It's an advisory board.
Just, and I don't know if it's, so go before pedestrian safety as an informative, take questions, et cetera. If there are no significant objections or concerns, could you administratively give it to engineering or give it to planning to approve as opposed to having you come back to the board and allow Christine, is that the name, the woman who heads up this board?
Chris.
Chris.
Chris Barrett.
That she would be the one to make the call?
He, he.
It's a he.
Oh, sorry.
Christopher.
It, he, if he would make the call in terms of, did he feel it was, you know, of sufficient to be able to delegate to staff, or would he prefer it come back to the board?
I wouldn't recommend.
I'm just trying to simplify.
I think that you should keep the control here.
Okay, cool.
I would recommend that.
Just throwing it out there.
It's just a courtesy thing, really.
Yeah, understood.
To do that, because they have, because they have some very limited pull and, like you said, in, with capital planning, so.
So from a, I love these guys.
But you don't want to see them anymore, we know.
No, 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 actually.
She looks like a male.
Actually, let's go grab a beer, but no, the cost.
Yeah.
Of yet another meeting, yet another.
Yep.
Well, do we, does it even need to be at the next meeting?
Is this something that town can, I'm, I'm more than hap, I'm free, I'm more than happy to come. And, and Matt and these guys have been awesome, I'm not being the least bit critical, this is just really hard for us.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it can be wrapped up quickly, I think a quick meeting with pedestrian safety committee.
And Matt doesn't have to be there, he can have the beer with you and.
No, and then just, they'll get word back to us that, you know, they, they met and you've introduced the plan to them and the abutters, and I think, I can't speak to the board, but I would be good with that.
So Joe.
Oh, I was gonna, Jeremy, are you okay with that? We just like totally threw you under the bus. Thank you.
So Joe.
I was just going to suggest that it sounds like based on the board's feedback, you're comfortable generally with the layout as it's presented.
Yeah.
Something could be presented to the pedestrian safety committee, assuming there isn't going to be any significant changes there, I think staff would be willing to work with Matt on any last tweaks that needs to be made to the plans, and then it sounds like you would deem that to be shovel-ready, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Aren't any unforeseen huge gotchas.
Spotted salamander spotted only.
Do you want us to, do you want us to take a vote on the, on the layout? Does that help?
I don't think you necessarily need to, I think we received the direction that we need and, I think, because we see the direction he needs, I think we're all set on that.
Great.
Great.
Okay.
So are you going to send an email to Chris, or you want me to send the email to?
Happy either way.
We both send an email to Chris.
Yeah, we can both send one and really express the urgency, I guess.
And the heating system in the house in Westford is problematic, so we've been staying up at our condo in New Hampshire, so if you could let me know before the meeting, so I can be down for it.
It'll probably, like I said, all of our meetings have been, for the pedestrian safety have been Zoomed still, so.
I'll be where I need to be.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you all very, very much.
All righty.
Thank you for the work on the plan, we appreciate it.
Thank you, yeah, I, I, thank you.
Bye.
And it's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does, it looks good, great.
And that's part of it going, explaining why, all the gotchas that you had to split it into, to the two sides of the road.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next general business item is topic C, which is a discussion about PB 2024, which was a definitive subdivision at Hartford Road, Colonel Rolls Drive, regarding a stop-work order.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mark Slager from Allen Engineering, I am the guilty party.
After all that discussion.
Yes, after our discussion on what we could and couldn't do, I misrepresented what you told us we, we couldn't do. And basically what it come down to is that we got direction to strip the loam, and normally when I talk about stripping, it's the top and the subsoil, because the subsoil is, you know, just a thicker layer of loam that's a different color, and it's usually scraped out anyway at the same time. So I forwarded an email saying that they could strip the loam, the top and the subsoil, that wasn't what was supposed to be allowed, so it is one-hundred percent my fault, and I apologize. All work has stopped within the right of way, they are working on the drainage basin, Paul and Jeremy met with me out on the site last week to go over what was being done in that regard, and I got the letter indicating that somebody needed to appear before the board to explain what happened.
Got it. So what's the plan at this point? Are we waiting for April fifteenth to allow work to start again, or?
Uh, yeah, we have no intention of doing anything in the right of way until April fifteenth, because we did more than what we were allowed to do anyway, so.
Oh, okay.
But the site is stabilized, they put in some additional erosion control measures and vermed up to prevent any water from running out onto the public way or out into the wetlands and whatnot, so it's still in a very stable condition, but they're just not doing anything in the right of way.
Yeah, I mean, overall, the contractor's done a good job, in fact, when we went out there and saw that they had done some work that they shouldn't have, he's the one who called to have us come out to the site to talk about, you know, things, and he did go above and beyond with the erosion controls and the ways managing the site, he's doing a good job, and they're communicating with us, so, you know, once they learned that they'd done work they shouldn't, he stopped and just focused on, you know, the detention area and things that they were allowed to do.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Naughty, naughty, don't do it again.
Yeah, really.
All right.
We might not be so nice next time.
I'll just make sure the battery's a charge.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Uh, that brings us to the end of the general business topics in this evening's agenda, which means we are on to reviewing the draft minutes of March twenty-first, twenty-two. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from March twenty-first, twenty-two?
A little second.
Any discussion?
I just had one addition, let's see, line one ninety-three, whatever page that's on, that's on the, what page is it on then? The last page, of course. It's, um, it was the board suggested bringing the concerns to the select board, Board of Health, and to the Board of Health to make them aware of the situation, this was with regard to Stony Brook Village.
Hmm.
And I thought we also mentioned that the, they should go to the housing authority, so I just wanted to add them to the list.
Yep, yeah, agreed, yeah, agreed.
That was it.
Good amendment. Any other discussion on the minutes? Okay, seeing now there's a motion in a second to approve the March twenty-first minutes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, great. Okay, that brings us to correspondence reports and updates, we have some correspondence, we have somebody who sent the correspondence with us this evening regarding some building energy code proposals, an updated stretch code and a specialized opt-in code that the state is working on, and seems like it will be available as guidance in December of twenty-two, as well as some bylaw language that the town of Acton has put together related to regulating fossil fuel infrastructure in buildings.
For, for the general bylaws, not zoning bylaws, yeah.
Oh, you're right, yes, for the general bylaws, I thank you for that correction. I'm not sure if anybody had specific comments or, or opinions or thoughts.
No, I've read it, I, I would be opposed to what Acton has done, I think would want to limit, I mean, I think we should encourage.
Yeah.
The blessing of fossil fuels, but I wouldn't want to handcuff anybody from, there are efficient ways to use it. It's interesting, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like the direction it's going at, you know, certainly I think better for the environment is a good thing.
Yeah.
And we should consider that when we're building going forward, but, you know, there's kind of a balance there.
I thought it was interesting, I mean, a lot of this goes, applies to the building commissioner, and I, and while it was interesting information, I wasn't sure really how much of it would affect planning.
Yeah.
And that was a question like, would there be any changes to the zone, potential changes to the zoning bylaws that could encourage these low-impact developments, like if we ever get around to modifying our flexible development bylaw, that could be a bonus thing.
Right.
And, and all things like that, so, but.
Right, encouragement, right.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
So.
Yeah, just, I was just going to say, that's probably generally what you would see if there was to be some sort of change in the zoning bylaws, to have some sort of, I guess, kind of incentive, if you will, for some sort of bonus, I guess.
Yeah.
Typically, you'd probably see changes to a, a general bylaw and something we go to town meeting and that sort of thing, something like this, you know, there'll, there'll be guidance, I think, that comes out eventually and it could lead to changes in the building code, it'll definitely be building code-driven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the zoning side, it's, it's probably more so you provide a way to provide incentives for.
Flex or open space development and bonus units if they're, you know, building in an energy-efficient way or adopting this like opt-in code.
And small houses.
Yeah. You've been consistent with that.
Yeah.
I'm not sure the developers are listening, but you've been consistent.
Yeah.
So they're building lots of small ones altogether.
Well, just they, they built the four thousand square foot one, and then it can get subdivided into four units.
So relative to Acton, I'm assuming that this is on the warrant for the upcoming Springtown meeting, is that accurate?
No, it passed last, last summer's meeting, and then going, they're looking at a homeroom petition to the legislature to put it in vote.
I did, I did call Jeff today and had a just brief conversation, or actually two days ago, I'm sorry, when I was reading this packet of the weekend, and I asked him about it, but he mentioned that the AG's office has not offered an opinion on legality of that. So we have some towns that are moving quickly, but the attorney general's office obviously needs to weigh in on whether or not that's.
Correct.
You know, legally correct or not, right?
Right.
And we haven't heard back on that yet.
Not yet, no.
It's got to be close, you say it was December?
It's at last summer.
Acton passed its bylaw last June.
Last June.
And they moved forward with a homeroom petition to the state legislature, which then ends round, end around, uh, fo, Acton over. would end around, end around Acton. The Attorney General has said that a town couldn't unilaterally adopt or create a bylaw like that, you'd have to go through this process.
Wait, I think Brookline got shot down with that?
Brookline got shot down.
Yeah, they had the same type of deal.
About eight or 10 towns. Just look if you, if you would permit me.
Can you come up to the microphone?
Thanks.
Say your name again, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Just for the people who watch this.
Okay, so I'm Paul Moss, Wagon Trail Road, interested in the environment. I'm not on any board at the moment, so I speak for myself, but I've been following this issue for some time, and it's, the mandate right now is for this updated stretch code to be invoked by the end of this year. Since we're a green community, you don't have a choice. You'll have to adopt the updated stretch code.
What does stretch code mean?
There's a base building code, and then there's a stretch building code, which sets more aggressive energy reduction standards, and Westford adopted that very early when it was first introduced.
Around 2014, I think, was when Westford became a green community, which obligated itself to take on the stretch code, which is more efficient building code standards. But the state has, what the state is promulgating now for comment and update is not just an update of the stretch code, but in fact, a specialized opt-in code above that, which would be pushing towards full electrification of a house. That's put, that's, in that specialized stretch code, there's several different pathways to achieve that. One is to be solar-ready but still have a gas hookup, but be solar-ready. There's other paths that encourage you to be all-electric right out of the gate. That's received a lot of pushback, that has not been settled yet, that has to be settled probably by August or September, so they can promulgate the regulations by the end of the year. But by the end of the year, you'll be obligated, there's a stretch code if you want to stay a green community, and I presume it's this board that will be heavily involved with any zoning changes or any adoption of code and changes of codes and so forth. It won't be the library commission, it'll be you guys, that'll be more than likely.
Well, that's what I brought up before, it's really the building commissioner.
It's really the building commissioner, I think, because it's the building codes that are changing, so that's what we were talking about earlier. I think we would potentially consider zoning adjustments to encourage that kind of development, but I think it's the, it's.
It's going to be building code-driven.
The department, really, right, to adopt building codes.
The select board.
And the select board, if it's the, yeah, if it's the general bylaws, it would be more the select board's purview, I would think.
Okay, okay, I didn't know that, so that's helpful to me. The idea of adopting the specialized opt-in code, which would be a choice for the town to make someplace along the way, I'm not sure who drives that, and in my letter to you guys, one of the things I was trying to, is get you to engage with the Clean Energy Committee, which is sitting to the side in parallel as an advisory board, developing a climate action plan for the town for the last 14 months. They've been working on this thing in sort of a beljar, and they need to engage boards like you, particularly boards with authority, to help shape it, review it, and accept it so the town can move forward with some assurance that that's what the town wants to do in spirit and in writing. And so they are, Clean Energy Committee should be reaching out to you, but I'd encourage you through Jeff perhaps to reach back to them and say, hey, how can we get to see what you're doing, what you're recommending, and so forth. And so that was my portion, I gave you this information set, saying, hey, the state is pushing hard coming down here, and you can see towns that are called vanguard communities with the expected environment, like Acton, Arlington, Concord, and so on, they're moving forward with these home rule petitions, trying to push for a fossil fuel infrastructure for any new construction going forward, and so I'm interested for you guys to think about that, and you could hear my comments on the Flag Road property, it would be nice if you, if you were able to think about such a, a set of questions that say, hey, can you think about orienting the houses on this subdivision so they're all solar-ready?
Yeah.
That'd be a big step forward, you know, and that doesn't take anything but a conversation with a cooperative developer.
Right, right.
You know, to think of, like, those kinds of things, you know, so if there's a will, there's a way, and I'd ask that you just simply engage with the Clean Energy Committee, have them come before you and tell you what they're doing, which would be promoting essentially an all-electric infrastructure. And I've been working with, also with the Permanent Building Committee on 51 Main Street and the libraries, I'd like to see those as municipal construction, consider those to be sort of flagship, you know, showcases for the town is serious about moving forward towards net zero. So that's where I was coming from, and I encourage your board to help in terms of learning about this topic and making sure that people are thinking about it in a sensitive way.
We might have a member of the Clean Energy Committee.
Hmm?
Thank you.
We do indeed.
All right, that's even better, that's even better. I thought he was a bank robber, but I wasn't sure.
Not tonight, I'm with Teller. My name is Tom Teller, and I am a member of the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee, and together with my colleague Jerry DiBello, we have placed a request with Jeff Morris set for time on your next agenda. I don't, haven't, we haven't heard back whether it will be the second meeting this month or meeting in the month after, to present the roadmap and to formally open that dialogue as we are with other boards and committees in town.
Great.
Great.
Thank you.
I think you're working with the electric vehicle committee too, right? They're working with you guys as well.
Yes, we're the EV characterization working group.
Right.
Bob, and also Jerry is also a member of that group.
So we are working on that, I don't know if you were aware of that, we are looking at, you know, charging stations and where those should be located, so it's not like we've not been engaged at all, but certainly always open to engaging.
And that's one where we are looking at potentially changing zoning bylaws, except, so.
Yeah.
Good, perfect.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Any closing thoughts, final comments from the board?
No, just a reminder, I will not be here on the 19th.
Ah, you'll be most.
Most, thank you. And I'll be not reachable via zone.
Love you.
Put that out there, right? Just to let you know.
That's a good, that's a good thing.
Yeah. Joe, any final thoughts? No? Thanks for your support, as always.
I'm over adjourned.